To order, I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States, to the republic, and nation one.
Justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so do you want to tell her now while we start?
Yes. So I have Dawn and Linda Raymond in the room with me as well. They are the owners of 91 Beaver Pond Road. And then I believe Mr. Oberg is on.
Yes.
That's it.
And that's everybody.
And Ben is not present. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting minutes from October 12th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, any open public comment? Holding off the guests?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else anybody else had? Okay. All right, for guests. Robert Oberg, we have you on first.
Okay. I would just like to, I kind of need to split it into two sections. But I'm really just not satisfied with our Sheriff's Department. So the first part, I mean, it's really something we need to discuss. And you guys are the ones that signed the contract and Select Board, and you guys know what the contracts are. The first part would be, back in May, I had someone onto my property and jump into my pool. And this has been an ongoing situation with the next door neighbors. It goes back seven, eight, seven, eight years now. And they have actually been publicly, I've been publicly threatened, and my children have been publicly threatened by them. And so, I mean, back on May, Memorial Day, we had someone jump in our pool. We had it on video. I went over to confront the neighbors about it. We had that on video. Obviously, their sheriffs were not around, and they were not available. And then the state, we had issues getting a hold of the state police also. And then several days later, finally, the sheriff came out, took our statements. And then it actually took about seven days to actually get our statements back into them. And I would just like, and after that, it just went boom. It, I never even got a call back, I never even heard anything ever again. We made several attempts to actually call them. And I don't know if the dispatcher was not relaying the messages. But that's pretty much, and here, here we are. I mean, I was kind of under the, it was pretty serious in my mind. My kids were in the pool. Here, I don't really know if this person was infected with anything. So, I mean, I have a potential of loss of income if I get infected. And I had, I never even heard back of anything. And I saw on the log reports that they had that they spent all of one hour on. And it just, I never even got a call saying anything was going on. So that was the first issue I'm having. It was, it's been repeated behavior. And, I mean, it's probably not anything, the last, the last time was actually last summer, we had an incident. And the sheriff was out, and I don't believe they took a report. But the sheriff told me that we should have evidence, we should have video, we should have something. And I went and I got video and we got evidence, and it just, nothing ever happened. So that is one issue that I'm really not satisfied with. The second issue is, we are actually working on our fourth story from the Sheriff's Department as to how we should handle dogs. We had a dog, it was a husky, can't exactly remember the timeframe of it, but it was several years ago. And we just, we couldn't, it was running all over the place, we couldn't do anything about it. We called the Sheriff's Department, and Sheriff's Department got involved. And obviously, we were told they couldn't do anything about it unless they saw it. So that in itself, with the availability of the Sheriff's Department, I mean, it's miserable trying to get them out there if something's going on. So we dealt with that, and that was actually, so then, that was one dog. And our second dog came, and we went down and talked to the neighbors over the winter. Different neighbors, different neighbors over the winter. Said, you know, our dogs really, you know, they're not really the dog friendly kind of type, and I don't, I don't want to get anybody involved in a dog fight. So I would just appreciate it if you didn't have your dog running around. And the response that we got was, well, my dog's down on your property and gets into a fight, that's his problem. And we said, okay. And then it just, it still continued, and then finally, I believe it was June. There should be a, should be a record of it, I can't remember exactly when it was, but I'll have to look it up. It was June again, and we had Officer, it was actually Andrew Cross was out here and told us that he couldn't do anything about it. The first dog. So we've got one story from Andrew Cross. And then we just had another story come in June with Officer Riley, and he said that there had to be a statement regardless, period, all statements. And so we were kind of confused because that wasn't the story we had before. And so we made a statement, and I'm not entirely sure what happened to it after that. And then we had it again. We had another discussion with the neighbors, and then it started going into, our dogs don't do that, our dogs never on your property, your dogs are out all the time too. And so it just, it went into a back and forth that it wasn't going to go anywhere. And so finally, we actually got another dog, and now we have a husky that's been running around. And then we had another officer come out. And he didn't actually take, I can't remember what his name was off the top of my head, begins with a K. He didn't want a statement, he just, he, my wife had been out there, and we had the dog on the property, and we don't know where it went to after that. And so he went down and talked to the neighbors. And they started yelling at us from down the road about how our kids are throwing rocks at their dogs and all kinds of stuff. And so that didn't go well. And then the officer came back and told us that dogs are allowed in the road. And, which, I, I, I don't know, I don't know, off the leash in the road. And I don't know where we even came up with that because they're on our property off the leash. And so it, I don't know, that, that turned into a kind of a turned around situation. And just recently, Officer Carter, and Greg, you were there also. Officer Carter came out and kind of cleared up a little bit of that. Because my wife was out in the yard, and she came around the corner of the house, and the husky was in the yard. And, I mean, it was pretty close to a dog fight, I mean, it wasn't, wasn't anything that wasn't handled by my wife, but the dog would not go away. So we were having some issues. And then Officer Carter said he would take a statement, and which, we left a message for him yesterday, but we had an officer out here Saturday. But I don't know exactly where we were. We were in the house, and we never heard anybody knock, so I don't know if he got out of the car, or we never got a phone call, we asked for phone calls before that. So I don't know, but we're still having communication trouble with getting the statements back and forth in here. And I'm just, I'm kind of tired of it because we're on our fourth story. And I'm just, I'm trying to keep my dogs from not getting into a dog fight. And it's just, I'm kind of getting tired of it. So that's pretty much in a nutshell. We've been here nine years. I really don't want to leave. But this is, this is just, I can't, I can't keep dealing with this. I mean, I've got dogs coming on my property, I've got people coming all over the place, and I call the sheriffs, and I keep trying to do what they tell me to do, and nothing seems to go anywhere. And I've tried talking with the neighbors. That didn't seem to go anywhere, I have one that I refuse to talk to without video or something because he has threatened us, specifically my children. I won't talk to him at all unless we have video or a third witness. So basically, I don't think our sheriffs are providing enough of a of what we, what I need, basically. And I sat through that meeting with Bernard a while back and got the song and dance about customer service, and I don't think it's being provided. Maybe it's just me, maybe it's just my family. But if that's the case, then that needs to be investigated. If it's just our issue that they're not handling properly, I don't know. But it seems like we have a real breakdown of communication when I call, and when they show up, and what they're telling me to do. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell of what I wanted to discuss. And secondly, I mean, we have ordinances in place, and it didn't seem like they knew how to handle those ordinances either. I mean, Officer Carter was out here. I think it was Thursday, it was Thursday. No, it was Wednesday, he was out here Wednesday. And he specifically actually spoke about the first dog that we had an issue with, they didn't really know how to handle it. And that they had to learn a lot, so I mean, this is kind of what we're paying them to do is to figure out the laws and what they need to do to help cover us. So, I mean, there's a real breakdown of what they actually know too. And I think I'm just going to leave it there. I'm just very dissatisfied with their level of performance.
Did any of the Select Board members have any questions? More information you wanted, anything, any comment? Okay.
A ticket, a ticket has not been issued?
No, we have not been able to get these statements back in, so to my knowledge, there has not been a ticket issued for either the dog or anything.
Is that correct, Greg?
Yeah, so we met last week, we actually had some video that the Oberg's had, 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 had given me as well, so I forwarded that all on to the sheriff, as well as we met the Oberg's on, at their house to get the statement, and Carter basically said that as soon as he gets the statements, we will be writing tickets. And then there was, so there's just sort of the breakdown, I guess, in getting the statements over to them. I'll call tomorrow and see who's on. You can even bring those things down to me if you want to, the statements, because I believe they're probably finished, right?
Yes, they're finished, but Carter said we had to have an officer involved in the signing, so.
Okay, okay, so I can reach out to them tomorrow, they're pretty good about getting back to me, and I can, you know, have whoever's on come by the office, and we can come to your place and get those things picked up, but after the conversation that we had last week with Carter, the, the intention was that, that as soon as the statements were in, and the video to go along with it, there would be tickets that were going to be written.
So I just have a question, so is the stalling and the statements are done, and the officer just hasn't stopped by to pick them up?
Yes, that's all, we've actually made, my wife called Thursday, and they were ready Thursday. But we said, you need to call before you come. Because we're doing remodeling, so we were probably in the basement. And then Friday night, we had my son's eight year birthday party. And so it actually, Officer Riley called Friday night during that party, so we didn't know anybody had called.
So they are making, they are attempting to reach out to you.
They attempted once, and then they did, they did not call again, and they showed up, somebody showed up Saturday. But I'm not entirely sure who, and I don't, we were in the house somewhere, but we never heard them knock or anything, so.
Could you bring the statements into the Sheriff's Department?
We have to have whichever officer, I, I don't know if Carter wanted them, or the dispatcher said they would just relay the message.
Because that might be an option if you keep missing them.
I don't think they should have to run it in, I think they've been more than obligatory on this issue. I think the sheriff needs to do the job he gets paid for, plain and simple, this has been
a few times.
I called them at eight o'clock Thursday morning, the statements were ready. There was no reason why we couldn't get them out there, we didn't hear back from them until Friday at 4:30. I had called again Thursday afternoon to let them know, you know, I really need you to call first before you come. Because we're going to be in and out, and we have things going on, the dispatcher then said, well, it's not going to be today, it's going to be tomorrow, which would be Friday. And I said, okay, well, tomorrow is a problem for us because we have my son's birthday party. We're not going to be available in the afternoon after I get out of work. So of course, they decided to call Friday afternoon, either that message didn't get relayed or something happened. I didn't get that message because I didn't expect them to call, because I had let them know that we weren't available then, until later Saturday night. Now, somebody had showed up, like my husband said, on Saturday evening, but they did not call ahead of time, like we had requested, and I don't believe they even knocked on the door because we didn't hear anything, and our dogs didn't even bark. There was no sign that anybody had been here, except for we just happened to notice it on our security camera when we were checking it later that evening. And then I called again Saturday, first thing Saturday morning, to let them know I am available all day today. And I was told that it would be after two o'clock because that's when Carter is available. And I didn't hear a word at all yesterday, and I haven't heard a word at all today either.
Are you, what is your schedule, are you going to be around tomorrow or possibly on Wednesday so that I can get somebody out there?
If you, if you give us a call, I get out of work at three.
Okay.
Sometimes we're in and out because of the kids, but if you just give us a quick call, we can make sure somebody can get here.
Do, I don't know if you want me to, you know, I don't have your phone number, do you want to give it to me here, or do you want to call me? Because we're kind of, you know, going to be out, this is on video, so other people can see it.
Okay, I'll just send an email to you then.
Fantastic, and then I'll make sure we call beforehand, but I'll try to coordinate, make sure we get somebody out there within the next day or two.
I mean, in the past, we have sat around for, you know, a week straight waiting for them, and I'm at the point now where I really want them to call because we have lives to live, and I don't want to sit around for a week for them to come out. So that's why I asked them to call, because in the past, we have just sat around and waited, and waited, and waited. Okay. So this is not a breakdown on our end, Judy, this is on their end.
Yeah. Okay, I'll get them, I'll get something scheduled up, and I'll give you a call as soon as I know so that we can get together and they can pick those up and get this moving.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dawn and Linda.
So, so I have Dawn and Linda Raymond here, they bought up the house over on 91 Beaver Pond Road. When'd you buy that, a few months ago, right? In June, and if you remember, we, we find, we got that letter from the state saying that the Beaver Pond is a private pond now, it's 100% owned by the town. So that brought up the question about liability and all the watercraft and things like that on the, on the water and on the beach. So at your direction, I was asked to send a letter out saying we no longer allow anything on the beach or out in the water overnight. And the Raymond's got this letter, and they're, they've got some water, it's a, what's it called, dock? Kind of a thing, a floating raft kind of a thing, that they wanted to talk about, you know, if there are any other options besides this not being in place year round and overnight. So this is Dawn and Linda Raymond, they probably, you want me to put you on camera?
No, you don't.
You need to be on camera just a second so people know who you are, but.
Yeah. Just me. Yeah, I guess he, he mentioned pretty much everything I wanted to mention, we have removed the raft and the boat that was there, and we put it over on the other side of the road. And we understand, you know, the position of liability on the side of the town, we understand that. And what we're after is, is try to get a, resolve it to something that's happy, you know, make us both happy. What we thought about is if we could get a rider on our insurance policy, or a standalone policy that would cover liability on that so that we could keep it over there, because carrying that raft back and forth across the road, I don't know what it weighs, it goes a couple of hundred pounds, and for her and I to carry it back and forth every day is, you know, it's just not difficult to do. So that's kind of where we're at, we just kind of want to know if we have any other options so that we could keep it over there so we can enjoy it, and enjoy all the pond has to offer. And, you know, it's raised straight across from the house. We're home most of the time, we don't, we retire, we don't go much of anywhere. And I can honestly say this summer that nobody ever touched it, none of the kids that walked up through, you know, we just didn't have a problem. And so that's kind of where we're at, I don't know, when the hesitant thinks you wanted to add?
No, I just.
You look great, go ahead.
Yeah, right. Sorry. I was thinking that we wanted to see if, you know, we can look into options with our insurance agent about a standalone policy, a rider on the homeowners. Is the board open to that, since our property is directly across from basically the midpoint of the pond? And I was also thinking, just say a seasonal thing, not, you know, not that the raft would be over there on the side of the pond all year long, snow and winter and all that. But maybe like an RV parts type situation, May through, what, September, generally is how they run? Sort of like five or six month policy. And that would remove the town from legal and financial responsibility should anything ever happen, you know? So you have to tell us if you think that's something that you'd be willing to entertain, or?
Or if we have another suggestion that
Yeah.
Does anybody have any response or comments? Questions? Anybody considering, would consider to, you know, visit this and consider alternatives?
I think we need to stick with the ordinance, I feel this way because it's a town pond for everyone. I feel that people don't go there because they don't want to be spoken to, which has happened in the past. And if that was out there, then it would need to be open to the town. And, and I don't believe the town wants to take an insurance liability on that. That's, that's my feelings on that.
We're not going to keep it out in the water, it's going to be on the bank by the water.
But you're still going to put it in the water?
Well, what about other people that have floating rafts and?
Right, you, but you want to, so you want to put it in the water and then take it and put it on the shore?
Yeah, after we're done with it, in, you know, like, we would pull it out, and we would swim off it, or do whatever we're going to do. And then we would pull it back into the bank and up on the shore. Just not across the road, because we can pull it up on the bank easy enough.
Or to the bank's edge.
Well, or to the bank's edge.
And then tie it off on a tree stump or something during the season.
We're not asking to put it out in the middle of the pond and leave it out there.
Because that would give the impression that the general public could, I mean, I can see a teenager coming by and wanting
And you wouldn't be able to regulate it that way.
No, no.
It's still the same thing, it, so basically what that's saying too is, I can go get one and I can put it out there as long as I pull it in and, and leave it.
Well, I think it's, excuse me, I think it's different, and I'm just going off of tradition and what it's always been, and it's just the people who live there always had a dock off of their, on the other side of their house. So I think it was those people who were looking to just have something out there, because they had access to the water.
And there would be some
I disagree.
There would be some sort of mechanism in place as well. Whether that be a facility use agreement, or a encroachment permit type of a thing, there's, there are mechanisms out there that you can use and make it so that not everybody can do it, it's something that is specific to the, the equipment, or specific to the owners of the equipment. And it would have conditions, the board could set whatever conditions they'd want to set on it. So there would be something along with just not, you have permission, there would be an actual document with conditions within that.
And I wasn't stating like, an opinion, I was stating a fact basically, the way it was, that was the case.
But we didn't own it then.
That's what I was referring to.
Yeah, but that is true, and I thought about this in advance, that that might be the position that the house was there, I don't know if the pond has always been there since like, say, 1700 or 1883 when the house was built, who knows? I don't know. But the house is not likely to get moved. And if it's directly across from the pond, and we remove the town from any financial or legal responsibility, you still feel that there's a problem with that because someone who lives within the borders of Proctor may gee, I can't imagine anyone feeling intimidated that, because they see a floating dock out there, that they might feel that they can't use the pond, the facility.
That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying people tend to not, because they think it's owned by the people across the street, when in reality, it's owned by and they should be allowed to be anywhere on the pond because it is town property. That's what I'm referring to.
Okay, now I get, I see what she's saying.
I've never heard that concern from anybody.
No, I never have either.
Not within the town anyway.
But.
I, I know my neighbors have kept, they've been there 50 years, and they, I don't know how long they've kept the equipment over there, but there's never been a problem before. And certainly, if there was a problem in the past, they would have, you know, addressed it. I, I just think they're kind of making a mountain out of a mole here, and I don't think it's anything that's serious as far as if we could take liability and responsibility for it, by one of the methods, if correct, or the insurance company or whatever.
Well, perhaps, would you be willing, I don't know this lady's name.
Carrie.
Carrie, would you and the rest of the board members be willing to perhaps have this discussion and consider our request? I guess that's for us, that was like what we wanted to know this evening, that are you open to our request?
What about the other board members, I've only heard two talk, there's I think, what, five board members?
We have one who's not here tonight.
Tom, do you have anything, or Bruce?
If there's a lawsuit, any lawyer worth a salt is going to drag us into it too. They can get all the insurance policies they want. We'll certainly get dragged into it.
Bruce?
Yeah, I, I think, I'm sure they probably don't know the whole history that the land and the pond was actually owned by Vermont Marble Company, and then Omea, and and, you know, Plustoffer, and what have you, and that was given just recently. The pond and the land were given to the town of Proctor, we did not own that prior to, what, maybe four years ago? And so there's been a change in ownership of the pond and the land around there, and that's why both the property that you purchased and the graces right next door. It was a little different situation, and so that's so, uh, that's where this, uh, you know, ordinance and these restrictions were taken by our insurance carrier.
Even our insurance carrier said we could actually do permitting. That there are alternatives.
That, that, uh, I interpreted it a little differently.
Well, it's in the, the letter he sent us, so.
Yes, correct. Yeah, they, they didn't recommend it.
No, but we could do it.
Yes, but they did not recommend it.
Was that one of the recommendations? Was it one that was in that one of ways recommendations?
Yeah, there were three different things that here it says, here are a few ideas for the town to consider in controlling. That was one of those three.
I guess what, how we should leave this is perhaps the board would or take a vote. If they're not willing to consider it, say so formally in a letter to us or however that's handled.
Well, we would do it through this mechanism here and then it would be within the minutes. And you would have, you'd have, the evidence would be the minutes, which is recorded. We have official minutes that are written up and then we have this recorded as well.
So are any of you willing to reconsider or talk about it further or?
They made the point, uh, we would thank them for coming in.
Hey, that wasn't my question. The question was, are any of you willing to reconsider this or revisit this? At another meeting or the next meeting? Are you standing by your decisions from prior?
Well, you know, maybe, uh, we could offer these, uh, things to, uh, our insurance carrier and, and see. But, uh, I don't want to open up a kettle of worms for us.
You know, if, if you feel you want Greg to do a little more research on it and see if, uh, that's an option with your insurance company. To make sure you're relieved from the liability of it, that, that's fine. We've moved the docks, they're all across the road now. The graces and us, uh, over the weekend, we moved everything across. You know, to comply with the letter that we got. And, uh, you know, we're willing to work with you. It's just that it's, it's such a nice piece, a little piece of property right there. And it, it really decreases the value of that property without the use. And, uh, when we looked at that house and we went to buy it, the, the dock and there's a paddle boat was over there. And we asked the real estate lady, is use of that land part of it? And they said, they said, yes. You can use that land and store your stuff there during the summertime. And needless to say, we paid more for that house than we probably should have. Because we had that access to the pond. If we had known that it was going to be taken away from us, I'm not so sure we would have settled.
If I had known it was an issue, I can tell you that we would not have paid what we did.
You know.
Taking your access to the pond away. We aren't taking your access to the pond away. You have the same rights as everyone else.
This is true. But with that property and the proximity to the pond, it is a natural conclusion that whoever lives there would go right across the street. And put their little beach toys in there and play with their grandchildren or their neighbors or whatever. It was not a town park with all the rules that go with that. When we bought the property. And.
Yes, it was. It was absolutely town property when you bought that property.
Town park. It was not.
Well, it's, the rules are actually the same as they were. I don't know when you approved the, the rules and regulations for the Beaver Pond.
I guess if, if someone had said to us that we should not leave our things there overnight. You know, before we bought the, before we were in negotiations or whatever. That would have, um, you know, it, we might have gone back and thought about it and said, well, no, you know, it's just not worth it. Let's move on. Or yes, it's a beautiful view and it's a quiet street, great neighbors. Maybe we wouldn't have cared so much. Who knows? It didn't happen. It was just, um, it's, it's really nice. I mean, I understand your point. I do, Carrie, and I, I, I see it now, the way you're looking at it. But the other side of that is if your insurance company or the lawyers for the insurance company, whoever say, no, all we have to do is get a policy that blah, 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 whatever. Depending on the cost of that, of course, we'd be willing to look at that. I, I don't know if there's a, a solution here for that floating dock. We don't use it that much, Don and I, but the grain kids certainly did when they were up. I want to be able in a perfect world to take it, put it out there in the water. And if I have to, we'll drag it back to the edge of shore like Don said. To be helpful. But I mean, I'm going to put my kayaks in there. I'm certainly not going to take them over to the picnic area and put them in.
It's not a matter of where you're putting them in. It's the, the rules are you can put in anywhere you want. You just can't leave them overnight.
And I, I, I guess I would argue the fact that you think that everybody in town is going to end up putting a floating dock out there. It's been like this for years and nothing, nobody has done it. So I, I don't understand that side of the argument. People aren't going to do that. I, I wouldn't take a dock and put it out there in the middle if I lived on the other side of town.
Whatever. They have to make a decision and I would appreciate somebody call us, send a letter.
Whatever is decided. I can give you a phone call. It's also going to be in the minutes. And so the minutes, you guys do internet and all that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if you go to our website, uh, under select word, there's a tab for minutes and the minutes will be there by the end of the week.
That's fine. I'm, I guess, are we clear? Are they willing? Are you willing to talk to your insurance people again and maybe get a little clarification on this more specific? Since, you know, for our, our request or.
Yeah, there's no need in dragging this out and making them just wonder. I mean, if all three of you are against it, then what Ben and I say doesn't matter.
Well, I, I think our letter, uh, you know, certainly to them clarifies our position here.
Well, I think this goes much deeper.
Would you stop? No, no. Yes. Stop. It's okay. He's going to insist.
Okay, so you basically put this to rest. I just need to clarify this tonight because nobody's saying, you three are the ones that made the decision to do this letter.
Yeah, I think we need the full board to.
Well, the three of you are, are against.
We're, we're, yes, we're.
The majority. And I don't vote unless I need to break a tie.
Yep.
Well, that's all right. I mean, you know, thank you for, for listening anyway and we came and said our piece and you kindly listened, so thank you.
Be careful, it's, it's really dark. Are there lights on there?
We have a cell phone with a flashlight on it.
All right. Good stuff and everything.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Hey, we'll move on to good stuff. Does anybody have any good stuff on the, uh, for tonight? No one? The Socrates have been doing fantastic, so they've gotten an awesome year behind them and moving on further. So I think that's spectacular. Anybody else? Okay. We're going to highway, but we're waiting on Greg. Of all our guests, Lisa, did you know that someone also joined by phone? I think she's still on there.
She is, her mic's muted.
Okay.
She said she was on her phone.
Oh, Lisa, you mean?
Yes.
Oh. Is it?
I'm sorry. I, I can't see who it is because I'm on my phone, so I can't.
Phil, Firestone? And Phil, right, is Phil?
Phil, yeah, Phil and Cheryl.
Phil and Cheryl are on by, on phone. And I believe the over, did they sign up? Or no?
No.
They're still there.
Okay.
Who is that galaxy tab A?
Over.
Okay.
They just took video off.
And sound.
Okay, we've gone through, um, no one had any good stuff.
Okay.
So we'll move on to highway.
Um, so nothing major highway, but we will have a report to you at the next meeting. Um, and anything really concerned with like capital stuff, I'll have in my report later on. Somebody's chatting with me. Let's just see. Oh, Phil was just saying hi. Okay. So yeah, nothing, um, nothing really right now to, to talk about other than what's within my report.
All right. Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
Oh, moved.
Second? All in favor? All right. Contract seven?
Yep, so contract seven is, uh, we're coming back to this. This was actually the tank removal, the reservoir removal. Part of the big bond stuff that we did. Uh, we take this, we took this out to bid. Uh, I'm taking this off now. We took this out to bid, if you remember back when I had first started, I think in June. And, uh, there was some concern about the cost being a little high, plus with the, uh, the way they demolition the tank, there was some concern about fire and things like that. So uh, under, uh, the select boards, guidance, we was asked to put this back out to bid and I did. Uh, and the Belvin Company came in as the winning bidder. Came in a little bit lower than I think than it was before. And, uh, they're going to be doing this tank probably within the next week or two. Um, so I just need to get this, this contract approved for the demolition of the east side tank, which is contract seven.
Need a motion or what are we looking for?
Yeah, there's a motion to approve the contract seven?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Contract seven approved.
What's the completion date on that, Greg?
I'm sorry?
What's the completion date on that?
Uh, it is November thirtieth.
Okay, so they got a month.
Yeah, there, I think they're really pretty much ready to go. Just kind of waiting for a decent window of weather.
Okay, great. Will that, uh, will that finish up our, this, this water bomb that's been around for years?
No, almost. We're still waiting on the O and M manual, which is also the hydraulic model. And then we've got the, uh, the disconnection of all the service lines coming from the old surface treatment plant.
Right.
We've got that to do. And that, that is just waiting on, uh, I'm trying to get easements from everybody. So it's kind of slow process. Uh, the work is fairly simple. We're going to do it probably in-house, but I still am working on all the easements. Uh, the O and M manual, they're working on sort of, right now, the holdup has been the hydraulic modeling. They're waiting to get some more data to finish that up. And once those two are done, I believe that's everything.
Great.
Stream crossings and that type of thing.
Exactly. Yeah, they've, they've just basically gone to a few locations to disconnect it instead of taking it all out. Yep.
Yep.
Nothing else underwater?
Nope.
Okay, is there a motion to go out of water and into sewage commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Again with this, uh, most of the things that are, that are sewer related are the larger items I'm going to have in my, uh, my manager's report. The lagoon liner, things like that. Uh, but you will be getting a, um, an operational report at the next meeting. Uh, I've been staggering them. So you get the operational reports, one meeting, and then you get mine at the next meeting. So, most, like I said, most of the items here are going to be covered during the manager's report.
Anybody else have any questions or anything to add? Hey. Is there a motion to go out of sewage and we're back to the regular meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. All right, any committee reports?
The planning commission, uh, met in October. And we're just working on updating some high elevation, uh, ordinances, adding new ones.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody else have any reports that they, or committees?
Beaver Pond is, is pretty much shut down for the winter. Uh, we've got a few things we're working on, but, uh, our meetings have stopped and pretty much won't resume until the spring.
I have a question, Tom, maybe you know. Um, I've had a couple of people contact me and wonder why Beaver Pond gate is closed so early? Down to the picnic area.
Yeah, actually it was due to be closed earlier. Uh, we extended it a little bit. That, that might be a good thing, uh, for the board to talk about for a minute. You know.
The board has, I think it's up to the board to make that decision.
Well, I, I, I meant the select board.
Right, right.
It's in our rules that, you know, when, when we open, when we close, uh, times.
Right, and it was dawn to dusk, right?
It, it's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance right here. Operation or, or they're just, it's dawn to dusk.
Right.
And then there's also a date that, um, the, that the gate is to be closed.
Yes, it was just in, in the past for vandalism. Uh, what I was saying was if, if, you know, this is a different kind of year. Maybe if the board thought we should unlock the gate for the winter, you know, leave it open all winter. For skaters, ice fishermen, uh, cert, you know, certainly don't think the Beaver Pond Committee, uh, would object.
Yeah, because, um, I, I don't even know if there was two different people. They had just like sent me a message and said that they went up and it was like, you know, in the afternoon and it was closed.
Yes.
That was odd.
No, it's not odd at all. It's in the ordinance. That, that's our rules.
November first is the ordinance.
Yeah, the ordinance is until November.
I wasn't aware that it was, that, I don't know who locked it.
Right. I, I, I do know what happened. Okay, so I do know what happened. But I would rather we talk about it one-on-one.
Okay.
Could we do that in, at the end of the meeting?
That would be fine. It's just a quick statement as to what happened.
Okay, because it wasn't the same date. It was different dates.
It's been, it's been closed. It's been, the gate's been like that for over a week, maybe two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can't talk about it in an open meeting?
No. Not a good idea.
Okay, anybody else have any of the, um, Skating Reef hasn't met. They didn't meet this last time because there was nothing really to decide on. So they just kind of went ahead and start doing, you know, all the work around, around there. And there are some facility use agreements regarding them. But, um, they'll probably meet this coming month because hopefully it'll get colder and well, now hopefully it'll get colder, but it's going to snow. Hopefully we can skate soon, so.
And they've got their grant. So the, but the funds came in for the grant and.
Wonderful.
They've ordered the pieces like that and stuff.
Awesome. Okay, so nothing else for committees?
No, the, uh, Transportation Council, uh, nothing to report on that. Uh, we're, there's a meeting on the twenty eighth.
October twenty eighth, Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Bills, review of the bills, signing of them. Any questions on any of them?
I think they're pretty straightforward. Didn't see anything that was out of line.
Didn't see anything that jumped out at me.
So go, it's okay, go ahead and sign them?
Please.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, Otter Creek Communications, Union Districts.
So this is an initiative, I got this originally from the, Rutherford Planning, Rutherford County Planning, and Rutherford Regional Planning, whatever they're called. And the idea here, I, I've actually sent through the, the presentation they have, but the idea is that, you know, all of Vermont is underserved when it comes to internet. And I think that they see an opportunity here with all the influx of people coming into the state that are needing to work from home, excuse me, work from home, and to do this, they need internet. So what they've done is they basically found all these little underserved towns, and they've, they're trying to create this CUD, which is the, the Communication Union District. And this one will be called the Otter Creek Communication Union District. So this, this is very similar to what you'd get if, let's say if you had a, well, the dump, like the dump, you know, the town is a member of that, or, or could be a member of that, and then you would have a presence within that organization. The CUD originally, so to start with, is, all they're going to do is the planning part of this, and they're going to, you know, look at grants and try to find money that they can do to do a feasibility study. But the first step to this is to, to get into this, you have to do a resolution saying that we'd like to participate in this. It's not binding financially at all, they just want to know what towns are interested and which ones are not. Down the road, when they start looking for funding and they start trying to build things, there will probably be a, you know, an ask for some money here because you'd, you'd be a participating member, member in this. But what this is here is they, they'd like to find out if, if Proctor would like to be a member in the, the Otter Creek CUD. Right now, like I said, it's just a resolution saying we'd like to be in it, there's no, nothing binding to this at all. And I, I gave you a bunch of information to kind of read through, it kind of gives you a bit of a background, a lot better than what I'm spilling out here, but if you read through it, it kind of gives you a background of what the intent is and, and what the, the kind of the end game is here. What they want to try to do is get what they call that middle mile, which is getting the, the fiber and the, the, you know, the internet from the source to the house. And that middle and that final mile is the hardest part. So this would be something that would try to fund or find funding and manage this, bringing in this fiber into this town, into all these towns, and bumping up what, what internet we have, so. Again, there's, there's really nothing that we would be, there's nothing financially that we're required to do here, it's just a matter of putting together resolutions saying that we're interested in this. And then they're going to move forward with their, their search for funding, and then the next step most likely will be doing a feasibility study. So if the Select Board is interested, I could write up a resolution that we could then pass and become a member of the Otter Creek Communication Union District.
I'm interested.
So.
I believe there was a motion or from the from the town meeting, somebody, I remember up on the bleachers made a statement that they were interested and asked us to look into it, so.
That's one of the Landon boys, yeah.
Yeah, and these function just, they function differently than other things in the municipal government, they function as, as an entity by themselves. So they become, they're a taxing entity, they can take on debt themselves, so they're, they're independent from the towns, even though the towns participate in them, which is an advantage here, so that if, if they were to go upside down or whatever, there's, it's, it's just within that entity. It's not the town, it's, it's on the hook as well.
Yep, yes.
So do you like a motion?
Well, yeah, I think I, I would do it by resolution, so if you're interested, then yeah, if you guys can give me a, a motion to, to put together a resolution, I'll bring it back to the next meeting.
I'll second Tom's motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Carrie? Thank you. Alright.
Alright.
Parking ordinance.
So the sheet that you have in there is what Ben sent to me. And because I'm new to this, this, the, the whole traffic ordinance thing, I haven't been involved, this one sheet, I tried to add what I could. So I looked back and it looks like there had been a lot of talk and a lot of back and forth on this, and we were kind of at the end of it, and then there was a wrench thrown in. So I found the most up-to-date ordinance I could find, and it's got some color coding in it as well, hoping that that might be the one that, that everybody was working off of with some small changes to it here, so. Again, I, I'm, I don't know, I haven't had any background on this, so depend on you guys, that if you're satisfied with the proposed changes or whatever, we can, we can move forward on this and, and I can get it, get it finalized.
Well, we all basically approved the ordinance, correct? As is.
Yeah.
And then someone came in and complained, so we took it off the table and revisited it to see if we amend it.
Okay.
It honestly has to be one of the longest parking ordinances I've ever seen in my life. I mean, it's detailed, like, we have every street detailed in that.
But.
It's like.
Did it go through the whole process, I guess it did. Did it, was it posted for 60 days and were people allowed to?
No, I don't think it got into that pot yet, standard.
Okay.
For 60 days.
It was posted, and when it came up is, I think, when Mr. Horner came in.
Right.
And I thought, I was part of this rewrite, and we discussed more than this. So I'm not really sure.
You mean more than what he submitted just now, Ben?
Yeah, we looked at every single street in Proctor and talked about every single street, and we talked to both the high school and the, the elementary school, and we talked to Tapestry. Because three of the biggest problems we were having have to do with those top three things. So those were three of the things that we were trying to talk about, and I believe that we agreed that school one, the one on that street, we weren't going to touch that parking, we were going to take that off the table. And we talked, I talked to Kristy Kaludi about the elementary school, now it's staggered, so it's perfect, and that may or may not continue, she said, when they got back to regular, whatever regular is going to be now, school or normal school, that we could visit it again, because she also agreed that it does get pretty jammed there. Tapestry in the summer at the pool, I talked to them. They had said that they would have no problem staging at the high school, and the high school would have no problem with that when Ben talked to the principal at that time. So now the principal has changed. But we did talk about taking that one off, and then we wanted to talk to, and I don't know if he did, because I did not talk to that daycare because that was the other street that was new on the ordinance that we thought maybe needed some clarification on it, there are parts of that street that I feel do need to know parking, but may not need to know parking if the elementary school dismissal changed up, because a lot of people park down on High Street on that corner, on the opposite side of the road, to pick up their kids instead of waiting in line, which creates a lot of scary situations sometimes, because they're crossing the road and their doors opening, and there are kids everywhere and cars everywhere. But what we did add, we did agree though that Kane Street should be no parking on both sides, the entire street. That was a definite, because we also had talked to the fire department, correct? And the whole board about that street and how we needed to get it to be clear. I don't remember what we talked about on Pearl Street. But that East Street to Patch Street to Wormsby, I think that's one that we were that's the one in front of the high school, right? I have to think where they are.
That's the one coming up East Street Hill that's already posted.
Yes.
Yes. So that one's already there.
Well, yeah, but it wasn't in the ordinance, I don't know why.
Yeah, right.
It, it's all signed.
And then, so that was adding that one to the ordinance, and then North Street, we have a problem there, and we would rather discuss that problem, Ben and I thought, with that person that owns that property first, before getting signs. Because that was the other thing, we are going to have to buy signs according to the sheriff for him to do anything.
Yeah.
So it is also about s- signs.
My understanding was, and this was a long time ago, is that we all approved signs, especially there.
I believe we did, Judy.
Yeah, and we, we basically said we want signs there, we want them up on Kane Street, and we wanted, and then we never heard about them again. I don't know if they were ordered.
The ordinance didn't, didn't go through, we rescinded the ordinance or brought it back, so I don't think Stan ordered any signs because there's no ordinance.
Done.
So I'm not sure how that piece fell through.
Right, because North Street's a big pro, I mean, that's.
Yeah. Yes, a- and.
School, so kids, they're dropping kids, gotten, they park right on the sidewalk, they're in the road and.
They're always parked there, even during the weekend, it's not.
Right, right next to the intersection.
So is this not really running?
And a fire hydrant, I think.
Yes, there is a fire hydrant down there.
Yeah.
So do you want to have us all take another quick, oh, somebody, do you want to talk?
It's Lisa.
Lisa.
So I'm sorry, I, I, is Carrie saying that what is on about the street in front of the high school staying, or that you're removing that?
I believe Ben and I discussed removing that, that's on, not on this ordinance. Might be on this one, it's one that we talked about before, where there's a painted sidewalk and people, there's parking pickup and all of that, and Ben watched the traffic pattern and didn't see any reason for us to do that. Everybody who walks, walks on the opposite side that people were parking on, or that we were going to put no parking on.
Okay. Thank you.
So I, I feel like it's best if we take at least another, what, two weeks to review this till the next meeting, and everybody have any edits, changes, improvements, come back, and then we'll hopefully go from there and say let's get this wrapped up, does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah, we need to get it wrapped up before winter and
Right.
Getting signs up and what have you.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Okay, facility use agreement, we have two of them. Cub Scouts and at the rink in Furnace Brook, Westland Church at the Park gazebo.
Are the skating rink people aware of these are coming?
They are, yes, yes. Every time, when we get one, I send an email saying, is this okay, you know, because it's kind of their schedule that we're working off of, and they, yeah, they approve it each time.
Yeah, and, and the Boy Scouts are aware of the, the fee?
So the Boy Scouts will, the idea from the managers out there was that we waive that fee because the guy who's doing it, within your packet, he's been certified to do COVID cleaning, I guess.
Yes.
He has certifications to do it, so because the intent of that, of that fee was really 100% towards the COVID cleaning that they'll be doing.
Yes.
Need to have that fee because they're not going to be doing that, they're not going to be doing the cleaning. The Boy Scout, whatever the guy is, like the scout leader who's certified to do it has volunteered to do it so that they're not paying that fee.
Yes.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, if the skating rink people are okay with it, I, I don't have a problem.
It was actually their idea.
Yep. Are, are they going to close the rink on Tuesday nights for the Cub Scouts, or?
Right. If it's alike, or they're going to end like, say, December 1?
I don't know, she's, they, they're involved in all of these, and they say that these are just fine, that they have no problem with it, so.
Okay, I'm just, okay, great.
Yeah, I kind of left the scheduling up to them, and I, I don't know what their plan is.
I, I think I have the same question, because like Christmas vacation and those other vacations, generally they're skating at night. But is it closer to the weekend, is that what you're referring to, Tom?
I believe it was.
Nights instead of Tuesdays?
Yeah, I believe it was Tuesday nights, they wanted their meetings.
Yeah, they want Tuesdays, 5:30 to 8.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know.
If the rink people were happy with it.
That's what I say, if they're happy, I'm happy, yeah.
Okay, so there are motions to approve the Cub Scouts?
Uh, no, was there an insurance form in with that?
There is.
There was a certain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, motion to approve the use by the Cub Scouts.
Thank you, second that?
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, guys. Okay, the Furnace Brook.
I think you, you need to have the insurance made to the town of Proctor, you can't make it to the skating rink. It should always be to the town of Proctor.
Where is it?
It says.
It says a skating rink, so they need to reissue a new certificate of insurance.
Check this right here too.
Oh, it does.
Do we do it over?
Like, additional insurance?
Yeah.
Alright.
As long as they can do that over.
Okay.
This approved with the certificate of insurance being adjusted.
Yep.
And then the Furnace Brook Church?
So, Joel, this is Joel Tate again, they've been using the, the rink, but now they, they, he wants to possibly have an event this winter, he says he's not sure, depends on the weather, of course, but it would be at the gazebo. I've actually reached out to him to get the insurance as well, and they're really good about it.
It looks like it's Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
See, yeah.
I figured it was Christmas Eve.
It's a, it's a service, it's a worship service, but I just don't know, I don't know, he said, I don't know if it's going to happen, kind of depends on the weather.
Okay.
But he does know that I will need insurance as well from, and they've been really good about getting it to me.
Right. He provided it before, didn't he?
He did, yeah, he did.
Alright, is there a motion to approve pending the certificate of insurance being received?
Who was the other?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. The manager's report.
So my report is in your packet, I'll just go over a couple little highlights here. We did not get the grant in aid, that equipment grant, that plate compactor we were hoping to get. I guess they had a lot of people that were interested, and there was a town that was before us, I guess, they said that we should apply for it again, but this year we will not be getting it. I met with our design engineers, as well as Frank Beatt, out on Beaver Pond Trail, to talk about some alternatives to the alignment that we originally had, which, which went right through the middle of his property. We came up with another idea that might work, basically runs it along a- along, geez, what, Market Street, not up on the asphalt, but away, probably 15, 20 feet, right up, right up on his property, but it's away from the asphalt. Parking might be an issue there, but we, we're kind of working through it. So the engineer is going to put together a design on that, and we're going to see where it goes. I don't know if there's really any other options besides what we've looked at, plus, you know, the one going through his property, which is definitely a no-go. It, it's kind of tough through there, I don't really know what we're going to do if, if this doesn't work out. Another grant, the Class Two Grant that we applied for, because of COVID and some uncertainty at the state level, they have decided to not fund any Class Two paving this year. So the West Street paving that we had scheduled to do. So the West Street paving that we had scheduled to do, or not scheduled, but we had on the books to be done, um, will be put off probably until the next fiscal year, state fiscal year. We did actually though, get an additional seventeen thousand dollars from the state to do some road maintenance. Instead of doing, funding all the grants, they just felt that they would just give everybody in the state a, a little extra. Um, and so that's what we got. So we got about seventeen thousand to do a little extra work come springtime. Um, so come springtime, I'm gonna have quite a bit of paving I think I'm gonna do, cuz I've got, I've got that grant match to carry over. Plus I've got the extra money too, so we'll do some, some, some more paving. Um, contract seven, you guys signed the, the contract, so we're gonna move forward on that. Uh, the lagoon liner is now fixed, the baffle is out of there and the liner has been fixed. Um, SOS, uh, drained the, the lagoon down and they, they repaired it. Uh, the town was there to help out with, with some of the dirt work and the liner removal and all that. But that has been done and the lagoon is back up, is being filled back up. So we are back to sort of our normal operations out at the lagoons. Facebook page is up and running, I hope everybody had a chance to get on there and look at it. Um, as of the day of my report, which was last Friday, we had sixty followers and fifty-five likes. So, um, what I'm gonna struggle with with this Facebook page is going to be just getting additional type information stuff around town. I'm gonna, uh, you know, the stuff that I do and kind of the, the governmental stuff is easy. But I'd like to add a little bit more into it, um, and we'll get there. But it's just gonna be a bit of a challenge until I can get somebody that can, can help me out with it. But, um, but so far it's going pretty good, people seem to be okay with it. And, uh, um, we've been disseminating the information that we have on that page. I've got the, uh, the, the two jobs that we're hiring for on that page. And so it's, it's, it's working alright, I think. Um, the town clerk's office, so, uh, Tom, you can speak on this too, but they're, they're coming along really well. Uh, the ceiling's in, the floors, windows, everything's in, uh, inside the building there. Uh, looks really nice. It's, uh, it's gonna be a struggle to, to hopefully get to November twenty-third. Uh, that is our set to move in date, but I did just find out today that the movers are not gonna be able to make November twenty-third ma- work. So, uh, I have reached out to two other companies that I'm hoping will call me back and, and can hit that target date. But, uh, that's, that's the deal right now. I mean, that's the target is to move in that week of November twenty-third. And if it can't happen, we'll have to figure something else out. But, um, but as far as the project, it's going along really well. It, it, it's gonna be very nice when it's all done, so. Uh, Simon's contract, uh, so we're finished with that. So you know, uh, they're gonna stay on with us for, uh, to the middle of, uh, December, I believe. Um, and I am currently advertising for the two positions that were within that, that document that I gave to you. Uh, one is for a certified, uh, certified person to run more of kinda the day-to-day running. And the other is the half and half person or float type position. So I've received two, two resumes so far on that. Um, and that'll be out for another week or two, um, and we're hoping to get some, some good people there. Um, other than that, it's just sort of, you know, things are, are moving along. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The Beaver Pond Bike Ped Path, uh, we'll see that before it moves forward, uh, once, uh, revision is.
Yes.
On paper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, once it gets, once I get another draft of it, I will show it to you. Um, it, it's just, you know, without, what he's, what Ray is proposing over there is, it's required to be within a fence. All, at all times, so you can't have the fence open. So that really restricts where that, that bike path can go. Cuz we can't go through his property, so it's gotta go on the outside of the fence somewhere. So it's, it's, I don't know.
So the fence has to be around his property?
So what he's proposing is an outside venue with alcohol.
Right.
So he has to have a fence around the entire property, so when people are in there drinking, they can't.
Okay, so, but his, the fence won't go up all the way to Market Street, right?
No, but it will go, so, yeah, right.
We, we could actually do the bike path along there and then cut down between him and Proctor.
That's exactly what we're proposing, is not necessarily being up on the road with the trail, I want it to be further away.
Right.
So he wants to do parking there and he thinks he can do straight in angle and parking, which he, he can't. I don't think he can. Um, but you do parallel parking. So it's wide enough, so you have a parallel parking space right next to the asphalt. And then on the other side of that, on his side, you would have a trail.
Okay.
So, and it works good for him, cuz the people that are parking there could jump right on that trail and walk down to the venue.
Right.
Um, but then of, then it's exactly what you said, it would go up and it would hang a, a ninety down the hill.
Yeah.
And through, um, right where the gate's at for Proctor gas.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, but we're just gonna see how that works.
Right.
And see, you know, if, if it's a huge cost increase or we'll just kinda see where it goes.
Okay.
So, but I will get, bro, I will bring that back to you whenever we get that though. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, uh, moving week is gonna be hard to find anybody being Thanksgiving, uh, week and what have you, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, our, our budget's tight and we would rather not spend another month's rent at, uh.
No.
Uh, so is the exterior, exterior, what they said won't be done by them, maybe?
The addition is what won't be done, which is okay.
Okay, so we could actually maybe move in sooner?
No, the twenty-third is as soon as that we can move in. I tried, I tried that, yes. And I'm actually gonna be gone that whole week of the twenty-third because it's, my daughter's getting married. So that even adds more fun to it, but, um.
So we don't have, we're just looking for people to like lift and move with a truck and stuff, right?
Yeah, just all the stuff that we have, like in this, the little hot box out there.
Okay.
Going across.
Is that an option? Cuz I've moved so many times, that there's these guys, you, you haul and they move it.
We can do whatever we want.
And you just pay them and they're like.
Sure.
Why don't we contact them?
I have, I've contacted two other, you, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I'll ask.
I contacted two actual movers.
Okay.
You know, like the real mover guys and, but if, if, yeah, we could rent.
These guys do this on the side as.
Well, as long as they have liability insurance.
Oh, they do.
Okay.
Yeah. One of them actually works for.
It's a one-day job.
Chucker, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not that hard.
They'd move me probably five.
Okay, so maybe we'll have an option. Um, cuz we, we really would like to do that week, cuz it's, we can close the doors all week and get everything like they need to be, get everything put together. Uh, and the following week, we've got, you know, Celia's got stuff going on, bills and all kinds of other stuff. So it's a good, that would be the week.
Yeah.
Okay. So hopefully, but we're, as far as the contractor, he has said the twenty-third will work for us, but no sooner.
That's good.
Yeah, I've tried, I tried to go the week before and he said.
Yeah, I see the flooring is down and they were doing the trim.
Yeah.
On the, uh, office thing this morning.
Yeah. Yeah, and the ceiling's in.
Right.
Ceiling and everything, it looks nice, it looks really nice.
Looks like a nice, clean, new space, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anything else on the manager's report or questions?
They got that, uh, vehicle moved up on Terrace Hill. That was noted there.
Yes, sir, the, the van is gone now up on Terrace Hill.
Yep.
Have we heard anything back about the car in the creek?
No, no, it was, uh, I had talked with that, the state guy a few weeks ago or maybe a month and a half ago, it's been a while. And he was working on who it was gonna do what, and that was the last I heard about it.
Can you reach back out to him again, please? I think we have to keep saying something to them.
Yeah, well, last time I talked with him, it was basically what I got from him was pretty much what he said before is, our, our stance is we're gonna wait until Mother Nature takes it down the hill.
Mother Nature's never taken that down the hill.
That's, that's the, that's their stand on it. That's basically saying, we don't wanna do anything with it.
Yeah.
But I'll reach out to him again. And see if I get any other answers.
I just find it a little comical that there's this big Otter Creek cleanup. But that gets to stay in the creek, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Cuz that's gonna cost money.
Um, so does the other.
But I'll, I'll reach out to him and see if, if anything's changed, but that was sort of the idea I got last time was, we're just gonna make, was, we're gonna wait until Mother Nature does it.
It's not happening.
Yeah. Good luck.
Right.
Yeah, that's not coming out of there.
You know, the state doesn't have any money, so they aren't gonna commit, I don't believe.
I think it's, stay on them, I still don't understand why the owners of that vehicle were never held responsible. I'm still not understanding that.
Right. I don't know, it may go back to the whole blood out of a turnip sort of a thing.
Yes. If, if they don't, didn't have any insurance and don't have any assets, uh, kinda hard to collect from somebody like that.
Hey, financial report. Any questions on anything there?
Yeah, I think that, that building one for a hundred and forty-seven thousand and what have you, that's just gonna come out and wash, uh.
Yep. Yeah, once we, once we show the credit to the, uh, the revenue side, it'll just, it'll wash itself away.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I thought everything worked good.
Okay. Sheriff's report.
I, uh, well, we'll talk, let's talk about this later.
Yep.
What, sheriff's report?
Well, yeah, so, I was sheriff.
So is there any other old or new business? Alright, was there still the motion to go into executive session to discuss Beaver Pond's gate? Being closed?
And, uh, we need to touch base on the sheriff's contract.
Yes.
So I need an official reason from the sheet, what you're going into executive session for. Are you going in for Beaver Pond cause under what?
Alright, we, we talked about the Beaver Pond, I believe it was under the, um, standing committee reports, right?
No, 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 no.
No.
There's a sheet of paper you have about why you think.
Oh, that one, oh, I thought you were talking about what, when the item.
What are we talking about? I don't know what we're talking about, so I can't tell you.
Not either, no.
Need a good one.
It's kind of, even though he's a volunteer, it, it, it's kind of personnel, it's a personal matter.
Okay, I don't care what it is, I just wanna be able to, so you want to go in for, for personnel and contracts? Personnel for Beaver Pond, contracts for the sheriff?
Yes, that's what I'm thinking, I'm just saying that because of, for the reasons.
Yeah, I'm fine, I just need a reason.
Close enough of that one.
I think that's as close as we're gonna get, so.
So there's one, um, Lisa, appointment or employment or evaluation of a town officer employee. May have a motion to go into executive session to consider the employment and evaluation of that individual.
Yeah, now.
Is that what you're doing?
I don't know.
Well, that's the one that closely fits.
It's personnel, so we're going, I move it, we go into executive session for personnel and discuss contract.
And I also have to say that person's name.
Yeah.
So I really don't want to do that.
Well, you wanna hand it, it.
Okay, I, I don't.
You're just, you're just, uh, he's. I, I have in the past not always used the employee's name, I've just said personnel.
Yes, you just say personnel.
That's not what it says here, though.
I know, but you can be as specific as you wanna be.
Right.
Say it's, it's, I would say it's gonna be safe if you.
Okay.
Okay, you got that, Lisa?
You're going for personnel for Beaver Pond, contracts for the sheriff, Carrie made the motion, someone would like to second it?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into executive session.
Alright, I, I, I'm leaving and Greg, you'll send me this, uh, the end tomorrow, please?
I will.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Alright, Lisa.
Thank you.